Oh my goodness, technology. Oh, okay. Okay, everyone, here we go. We're calling the meeting to order. Thank you all for joining me through this amazing technology here. First, we've shortened up this agenda to take care of the essential items. So first, we have roll call of members.
Trustee Chombley?
Here.
Trustee Chombley?
Here.
Trustee Garrick?
Here.
Trustee Malinsky?
Here.
Mayor McFetrich?
Here. Great, thank you. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing about the 2020-2021 annual budget. So I need a motion to go out of the regular meeting.
So.
Okay, that was Kim first. And a second? I see you, Amy.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Tom. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, I need a motion to open the public hearing, please.
Solved.
Solved.
And a second?
Oh, Kim and Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Kim said so moved, I'll do a second.
Okay, I heard a little Malinsky voice say second also.
Okay.
Amy, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So this public hearing is about the approval of the 2020-21 budget. No one can attend this meeting, but we did ask for members of the public to either email us or write to us or call us with questions. No one submitted any questions. So therefore, there are no public comments. Now, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Solved.
And a second?
Second.
Just take your pick.
Amy.
Yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And a motion to open the regular meeting. Okay, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so the next item is the approval of this budget by the Board of Trustees. I'm sure you've all been thinking the same things that I have been thinking. We don't really know what to expect with this current situation and how this is going to affect our revenues. I think we'll just have to keep an eye on the budget very carefully and make decisions as we move along. We know it will affect our sales tax income. So we'll just watch it carefully. You know, keep in mind that to balance this budget, we have agreed on a six cents per thousand increase in taxes. We're going to transfer from the general fund $61,994. For the water fund to balance, we're going to transfer $29,967. And from the sewer fund to balance that account, it's $68,072. Is there a motion to approve this budget?
Solved.
Okay, Tom, thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Other discussion? Anyone have anything else to add? I know we discussed it previously. I just want to make sure you have no other questions. All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor Malinsky? Or, Trustee Malinsky? Mayor McFetrich? It's getting to us.
It's been a little stressful. Aye. Thank you. Motion is approved. Moving on to the, we have some transfers from the clerk treasurer.
Did everyone get? No, isn't the last one you got this afternoon?
Yeah, the one is going A5110.424 from A5110.4.
Oh, oh, I guess I should have reread it. It's going to, okay, when they do the transfers, I'll read them. A1410.4 clerk, $1,000 from A1325.11 schooling, $1,000. To A1410.2 clerk equipment, $3,295 from A5410.4 sidewalks, To A5110.2 street equipment, $2,000 from A5110.4 contractual, $2,000.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I should have.
All right, do you have any, anything else to add about those transfers?
No, they're just to cover expenses that weren't budgeted.
Okay, so we have to approve that first, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. A second, please?
Second.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Roll call?
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky? Mayor McFetrich?
Aye. Thank you. Presentation of the warrant and payment.
Okay, we have additional invoices to add to the warrant, $5,503.33 for a total warrant of $31,416.48.
Sure. Second, please?
I'll second.
Nikki seconded too.
Okay, it's hard to hear second.
Yeah, I know. Nikki's a little bit quieter. I mean, not that you're really quiet. I mean, it's not coming, it's not coming through quite as much. Discussion? Thank you, Amy. Discussion? Yes. Okay, that's a good question.
That's, that's not the, what we did like we did last year is we sent him money in advance that we're gonna use. It just takes off next year's budget versus this year's budget. We have extra funds and that's the reason why we're sending money in advance.
But your question is why we are not using the local quarry.
Oh.
I have the same question.
I think the reason being is when they go to, they can't get it themselves when they go to the local. They have to have it delivered. Therefore, when they do sidewalks, they have several small loads.
I don't think that's true.
You don't think that's true? But maybe we should.
You should be able to go pick up loads at DSO's, at the local quarry. I've asked Mike before to give them a chance at the business, so I'm not sure if he checked prices or not.
Not sure about you either.
Though, I do agree with you, Amy. I think we should be looking local if we can. Well, not only that, I pointed this out before. They are a mile up the road compared to, this quarry is like seven or 10, seven to 10 miles, seven, probably seven and a half miles. I agree, I think we should look into that.
Well, I definitely will ask Mike.
Mike, can you type an answer to us?
Mike, do you see how you can type at the bottom?
Yeah, he didn't even type the board again. I think he's a one finger pecker.
Yeah, I don't know if he's tuned in right now. Wait, where are you reading? What are you reading, Nikki?
DSO does not have one N-S and dust.
Oh, ones and dust.
Oh, okay, so they don't have what we need for this particular stockpile. I don't know why I don't see that. I don't see that answer. Oh. Um. Yeah, oh, Chad? Oh, yes. Okay, thanks, Mike. All right.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's why. But, but I agree. I mean, I certainly think we can check on with DSO for future purchases since they're nearby, they're local. I agree with you.
Okay.
Okay, other comments or questions on this warrant? Kim, Tom, Nikki?
No, no, I'm good with that.
You're good?
I have that same question as Amy. I'm glad she brought it up.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Roll call?
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich?
Aye. Thank you.
Do we want to mention the water and sewer?
The water and sewer about?
That we had billing.
Yeah, go ahead.
We also had a water and sewer billing April 1st. Water was $58,449.39 and sewer was $64,507.59.
So water. Maybe. I don't know. I hope so because this one is, this one is down a little bit. All right, as long as we're talking about finances, Mike sent you some information this afternoon. We're in desperate need of getting this Peterbilt hoist cylinder. We've got to get this fixed. Did you have, everyone have time to read this over?
Yes, I looked at it. I also called Mike and tried to put my questioning ahead of this meeting to save his time.
Okay.
So what he's looking for on that hoist cylinder is to approve that amount so he can get it ordered. He thinks that, he hasn't got the final quote back, but he believes it's gonna be less than that. In other words, the cylinders come from the same place, but he's dealing with two different people in regards to the bound body.
Yeah. Yeah, he and I have talked it over. Yeah, it's interesting. They're coming from the same, really the same place, the same supplier, right, right? This is essential. I mean, we have to have this. So he's asking for approval up to $3,100.
I make a motion to approve up to $3,100 to get the parts ordered for the Peterbilt.
Is there a second? Amy? Any other discussion? Whoops, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you need to roll call or?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion on this? Mike can, Mike can type in if, if he needs to. No other questions from the board?
None here.
All right. Roll call?
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich?
Aye. Motion carries. The other item is the generator for the water plant. We've been talking about this for probably two or three years. We have set aside money for this. I believe we set aside $40,000. So the information that Mike gave us, the quotes are, I guess, well, you've got these. The low quote, I believe, is $45,432. It's not too far off from what we set aside a couple of years ago.
And would you want me to fill in for Mike based on like his question with him?
Absolutely, that, yes, that'd be helpful, Tom.
We need to approve up to this amount. He is working with other contractors in regards to the electrical side of this, which could bring that cost down a little bit. I believe what he told me was he expects to save a thousand or two. But this, this would be the, it's the lowest quote based on what he's asked for, but he's trying to find other contractors to do the electrical side to save money. I also had to get refreshed as to why we're not doing natural gas to so the rest of the board knows. We're doing diesel because the gas line that was installed by us to that plant is too small to carry the load for this size generator. And it would be too extensive to try to run the line all the way from Moore Street down. Especially now that new plant is built and we have these ponds in place as well.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's why we're going with diesel.
That's correct. Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Hey, I think we actually got to join the meeting.
Oh, really? I'm kind of liking you have, being right here next to me. Are you in?
Well, we can have some stereo, maybe.
I've been playing with.
Oh, there you, oh, yes, you are in there.
Okay.
Wait, one person is waiting.
It's probably me.
I have to accept them?
Or if it's Mayor.
No, it's definitely, it's Chombley's. Let me see, what can I do here? Oh, just a minute, I'm going to admit you.
Okay. Whoops. Oh, I was there.
There we go.
We're in.
Oh, well.
Hello, everybody.
Here, I'm gonna, I will turn this one off, okay?
Okay.
All right, put your camera down. We see your foreheads.
How's that?
I see Tommy's ear.
Okay, hold on, one more there.
Oh, shoot. You're still, you're paused, you're still on. I gotta, there, all right. This technology is pretty awesome. Someday, I'll learn it. Okay, so back to that generator. We do have the, what, what, Nikki?
Mike, just type something in here.
Oh, okay.
Does he install the large enough line to the plant, but the small line was installed by a guy six to build it?
Okay.
That's kind of what Tom.
Okay. Good, all right.
So are they willing to fix that if they did it wrong?
No.
No, I don't think so. I think we're too far along now. I, Mike can add info to that, but my understanding is we've decided to go with the diesel.
Yeah, we have this sort of line out there up the street. It rounds to the back of that building as well. And with the design of the pond, it's going to be extremely expensive and difficult. Well, it's, it's not, you've got an immediate source of convenience. If you hook the natural gas, it is outdated to the amount that we're playing and running this thing. So a ton of diesel tank is enough to run a strip mill for 24 hours, which can be full constantly. A quarter of pumping at around 34 to 38 before it happens to be full. We already have a group of tanks there that we could keep diesel in if we needed to. Mike doesn't seem to think this is a problem. I don't think they have the time to plug.
Yeah. Yeah, Mike said we'd have to dig through the ponds and under all of our main power. Yeah, that, we're not, we don't want to do that.
Right. It's too bad it wasn't close to the design of this new plant. It was, I had forgotten about because it should have been done at that time.
Yeah. But it is really essential that we do this now and it has been brought up by some, I think, actually, the FEMA people who came here brought this up, this generator up.
Yeah, yeah, just the problem is if we have power out of the generator we currently have could run the pumps and, you know, this is part of the world distribution. But the way that the design is now, they have to manually add all the chemicals to treat the water.
Yeah. Okay, so do we have a, do we have a motion to approve this up to this amount?
Solved.
So the amount is $45,432.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Yeah.
Four-three-two.
Okay. Okay, just a second, I've got a little thing there. Okay.
And was there a second? I'm sorry, I missed it.
I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Kim?
Yeah. Roll call?
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich?
Aye. All right, thank you. See, I have a, I have a few announcements that I would like to make and then if any of you have any.
Oh, did you want to mention about the grant?
No, I think I'll wait, yeah. Just a few announcements for all of you and for the public. Please remember that New York State has a fire ban that runs through May 14th. The Village will be looking at how, what we are going to do about our fire policy in the next couple of weeks. But definitely, there's no burning per the state through May 14th. Also, remember that we do have a Village curfew. Those under 18 are not to be out in public places between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. As everyone knows, social distancing is really important right now. Please stay at least six feet apart. I've seen most people in the Village are out walking and they are respecting this. There are some groups of kids that are hanging out together that need to stay apart. We don't need any social gatherings. The playground is closed. We're all sorry about that, but it's just one of those things that needs to be done right now to keep people safe and healthy. As people have repeated over and over, remember to wash your hands, wear a mask, stay home, call your provider if you're sick. I just would ask you to call your neighbors. Call me at the office if you have any needs or questions. If you don't know where to get a mask, call here. I'm making them and I know a lot of people that have them and we'd like to hand them out. Remember that we all must play our part. We all must be responsible. I think New Yorkers are tough, but we're also compassionate. We care about each other and we really want everyone to stay healthy. That's all I have. Does anyone on the board have any announcements?
I do, there were a few moments. You know, food drive on April 20th. I'm hosting at the Champlain EMS Station 1 Building on Route 11. They, so you'll see that I've controlled it up already, just see my banners go up hopefully, but at the week. Again, you know, on behalf of the organization sponsor, it's, so it's still taking place. It's the one that was originally scheduled for next Columbus, which I can't do right now. I'm also setting up a virtual food drive to help the food parentries. Working on setting a donut mini paint to be funded through our charitable account by the next Columbus. So, please watch for that. I'm hoping to raise the funds for the running folks, their supplies. The other thing I have is I need to know, give a quick update on the dock and, you know, the kayak launch. So John Chombley today, he gave me a call for terrible, he said he would take care of it, plus the $1,200. He needs us to buy the decking for it. So I need to put a final order in. If you all agree with, I haven't done a lot of work, I haven't been able, you know, even tried to contact City of Burlington to see how theirs has worked out. And we discussed that. All I've found, from the little bit of research I've done, it sounds like that one bad review was probably just about to fail. So I mean, I would like to go forward and just place that order and then order the additional decking for the game weight, if that's okay, so at least get that started. And we do an idea, I have to talk more and dedevelop how to possibly get this thing installed because I spoke to Mike about it. He's not in time after all this loss of time. That's where we're at.
Well, yeah, we'll work that out, Tom.
Uh, one more thing there is I have a yay.
Yeah.
Do you have any more accessory you do apply?
Oh, excellent. Okay.
I don't have to repeat it, try this, so.
All right.
You want to give a roll?
Okay, excellent. Do you want that done right now or do you want me to call him first?
That's up to you. I think we have plenty of time.
Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait. I'm thrilled. Thank you.
Maybe that way we can do a formal appointment.
Great, yes, yes. Kim, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm trying to get a little update on what we've been working on.
I think if you are not specific because that's private and we can't really go into executive session and the camera's on, the big camera's on, so I think you could summarize it a little bit.
Negotiations are ongoing. And we're still working on it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Amy? Do you have anything?
Oh, did you not hear what I said?
Oh, I heard you say negotiations are ongoing.
Yes, that's about as all, as we can talk about at the moment.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Anything else, Kim?
No, I think that as soon as we're able to move forward with this kayak launch, that we just need to do it. Just need to cut the rope and move forward with it.
Yeah, Jen, I think it's the two steps we have to do is we'll have to reach out to Matt Cooper again and see if there's any way, I'm sorry, any way he can complete what we were looking at him do as far as approval of the size that I've got planned. And I think we'll be able to help go out to build for some contractors to do this in any manner.
Okay.
Mike does not think he can possibly pull it off.
Um, yeah. That would be a stretch. Yeah. All right. I'm happy to, happy to contact Matt and, all right. Okay. So that's it, Kim? Okay, Amy?
No, we're not doing our regular reports.
No, but if there were any announcement that you just wanted to share quickly?
Um, just, Amy, thank you, St. George again. They gave us $650 towards the volleyball court.
Yay.
So that's good.
Very generous. Yeah. And Nikki, any announcements? Quick announcement?
Um, I made quick online kids trivia yesterday because we did it through Facebook Messenger with, I had four or five families step in for a little bit and we played about six rounds of trivia questions with them. And, you know, it's just the same kind that they could do here today. So I really just, just loved it.
That's great. Great.
Yeah, and the library is allowing you to check stuff out. You just give a call and they'll set it outside for you.
Oh, good, good to know.
Yeah.
Keep putting the books out on Tuesdays, so if you call Tuesday, they'll be in there for a normal time. But yeah, I'll leave a message wherever, just to get that all out there.
All right.
And there's free Wi-Fi by the parking lot, too, so.
Oh. All right.
My joint border patrol, I'm there, like you have.
Yeah. All right.
That's good to know for some of the, the, uh, kids that are needing Wi-Fi. That might not, that might not have it at home.
Mm-hmm.
On the, the library system website, they have all the libraries with their password, three seconds, you can go out with your purse, see it, so. I probably, you know, free library in there.
Perfect. It's good.
And for those who don't have PrimeLink, um, they are offering free PrimeLink to students, uh, during this, this time. So the only exception I, I've heard about that's been an issue are people that used to have PrimeLink but didn't pay their bill, and they're not giving them free, um, PrimeLink. But they are offering that for the students, so people should check out.
Oh, good, good. All right, well, that's all I have.
All right, stay safe, everybody.
Could I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, a motion to adjourn? And a second? All in favor? Aye.
Is that Tom?
You like the Brady Bunch?
I know. Goodbye, everyone, I miss you all.
Stay safe.
Thanks.